Between.
Meetings open.
All right.
Thank you.
We see the answer.
Yes.
Some meeting is open for the finance committee appointing. Many. I guess, yeah, yeah, there we go. It didn't sound right, but I think it is.
Yes, it is.
Is this your meeting?
This is my meeting. Like them.
I love that.
So we'll start the appointing committee at this point. Um, we have one applicant from finance committee, Jacqueline Curry. Um, Jacqueline, anything you'd like to share with us other than your, you know, extensive resume? Yes, please.
No, um, it was for that. You know, my only thing was I was trying to figure out what would be the best place that I could help. And I think, you know, finance is a great start. Um, but my background is really operational, you know, I did three years in finance, but operations is another area that. I have a lot of experience. So just wanted to let you guys know.
Okay, that's great.
Retired from GE after twenty, yeah, I worked there for twenty-five years, retired from there. And uh, have worked at uh. Uh Walter Schler in Hartford for five or six years. And finally retired, retired and just looking to, you know, get busy and do some things for the community and. You know, just enjoy life more by getting out, because we just moved here about three years ago.
Are you familiar with the requirements of the finance committee?
Not entirely. I did read the bylaws. Um, so after, you know, you and I talked about where am I, which is the bylaws. Nothing there concerning. I don't know what the time commitment is or anything like that. Um, but you know, I'm sure I could work through that. Are you looking for, how long of a commitment are you looking for? And I did see that each individual, there's different individuals committing more time than others and.
We're, we're on a, we're looking for a three-year commitment.
Three-year commitment, okay. I plan on being around for.
That's good.
Hopefully, hopefully, right, God will. Um, so that's, that's fine. That's fine.
I've had Jacqueline in conversations.
Jackie.
Jackie, okay, I don't, I feel confident, but I'm thrilled that you're willing to join and help us. Um, I think you'll be a good vision.
Yeah. I have, um, you know, like I said, I really have an interest in operations too, so.
I'll be a slack person.
Yeah, come on, please.
She must have got rid of me.
That's hot. You said it, not me.
You disagree.
I just want to do more free time.
I was working over the fairgrounds.
Oh, yes, yes, that's right.
I was dirty or then I went over to.
I wasn't gonna say anything. Please, don't put things before me because I'm, I'm liable to say any.
That's all right. So any questions for me or? Who do I actually contact to say, okay, what are we gonna do and what would you like me to do and all of that?
The chair of the finance can be in touch.
Okay, okay, good. Happy to do it.
Good.
Or Christopher, yeah, he has the schedule for.
Chris has all the answers.
But that is Christopher has been charged with pulling together the financial team and making it work.
Okay.
Like a smooth oil.
And I'm hoping I could help you, Chris, you know, and with some stuff. Um, because I know you've got probably a lack of.
Chuggling a little bit, yeah.
So just, just one quick question because. Largest percentage of our budget, of course, is spent on schools. So how much do you know or, or how would you go about learning about the school budget, which has been pretty easy the last couple of years, but I'm sure it's.
Delving in and understanding it and, uh, you know, which I don't have any problem with. I don't know anything about schools. You know, from financing or anything like that. I worked in the. In more of a banking credit card management. It's, that was the capital business. Um, but. You know, I've been doing this for a long time, so I wouldn't have a problem with delving in, really understanding what you need there. Are you do you have concerns in that area or?
I do not at this point, but I'm, I'm sure that moving forward is going to be a little more difficult over the next few years.
It sounds like it, yeah.
Drying up of COVID month.
Our, uh, our current superintendent will actually be here tonight. We'll get a little update on schools, so.
Okay.
You may hear a little bit about that.
What, what's important to note that as a regional school district. We. Don't really have any input per se into the budget. They establish the budget and give it to us and it can be anywhere from fifty to sixty percent. Of our total town budget and we can't do. Anything about it. Unless we vote it down, which disrupts everything.
Who actually says that and talks then goes through the budget?
Well, there, there's, there's a long process. The, the, the school committee does involve the towns in budget hearings throughout the process of developing budget.
Well, again, my, my, if that sounds like an operational thing to an understanding of how, why are they charging, what they're charging and all of that, so. Um. You know, I'm used to doing those kind of deep guy stuff. Uh, so you know, to me, that's interesting to be able to dive into that, so.
Well, like a lot of other municipal finance things, it's lab is dictated by the state.
Right.
So you, you'll hear some tonight, but if you're ever interested in attending a meeting, we'll, we can keep you posted when they are. Always nice to have some finance reps there.
Well, I think my first step is to understand where in the finance group. You know, what is the role really that is I'm going to take on or whatever that is all to.
Great. And I intend to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint, oh, I'm gonna have Jacqueline Curry to the position of finance committee for a three-year term.
Yeah, well, like three years.
Now, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, sorry, you're. I know, it's.
Pretty soon I'll have you take over as moderator.
No, please, I can't do that.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in payment, please. Unanimous, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
Hope I can help.
Sure you will.
All right. I think I'll stay.
Yeah.
Yeah, listen in if that's my.
Return for that one and then.
Yeah, yeah, all those who favor journey, please. All right.
All right, so our select board meeting is open and recorded. Uh, we have four sets of minutes. So, um, and we came looking to approve meeting minutes from June fifth, June twenty-second, June twenty-ninth, and July tenth.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
All right.
Hi.
Oh, there, thank you.
This one looks like we need signatures from finance. Do you want to do that separate or the joint meeting?
Yeah.
Um, next up, we have audience participation, public comment. Seeing none, um, I would make a motion to go to new business update from superintendent. Oh, she's not here. All right, so forget about that. Um, oh, make a motion to go to act name C, review an act, and we're sending a vote, uh, to award American, uh, AR, ARPA funds. For broadband infrastructure in the amount of twenty thousand five hundred fifty dollars and sixty-six cents taken on January third. Um, do you guys want to come on, join us?
For each set?
Yeah, so this is, um, we talked about this, um, last week. Did you want to explain?
I'm afraid to jump in. Uh, so yeah, so basically the board back in January, point, point of view, but they poured ARPA funds for an invoice from Whip City. I won't even better explain what it is exactly in terms of broadband infrastructure, but it has to do with. Growing up the resiliency of our broadband network through working with other communities, including Washington, Otis, Beckett, uh, possibly one other. Um, so the, the slideboard awarded twenty thousand dollar ARPA funds for that project. Um, just last month, we just the Jack when town of Washington, they had gone out for grants, uh, and were successful. And so they basically got grant funds to pay for that very project. Um, so it was the town accountant's opinion that that check should then go back to the ARPA funds since the reason that we had awarded. The MLP this money, you know, didn't exist anymore.
And then we had discussed using that for the project, um. Getting the, this building wired for emergency. Uh, generator. You remember that TJ?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, how you doing? So, correct, so I mean, I just wanted to strip, put the record straight because. To be honest with you, what was written in the country journal after your meeting was total rubbish. It didn't have anything to do with this. Uh, I didn't know you were talking about a generator for this building. Is that what you, because?
We were talking about using that funds.
Yes.
Towards a project that we were, yeah, trying to work on.
Uh huh.
For generator.
So, uh, the way, so the reason, as Christopher said, the, um, money was returned. Uh, because the town of Washington got a grant for this project. What this project is, is, uh, redundant for all those four towns that he mentioned. It's almost complete. Uh, there are three groups, n- north, middle and southern tier. We're the southern tier. Um, and so today Verizon is in town, uh, putting the last connection, uh, from, um. Uh, up to Blanford, uh. That way, um, we will have redundant network when it's all done. Right now, the only connection that Blanford has to the network. Is through the Russell Elementary School up, uh, Dickinson Hill Road. In, in the three years or whatever we've been online, fortunately, we haven't had an outage, not one single outage.
Okay, so you're saying if that were to, anything were to happen from that connection.
We would lose it, yeah, we didn't, sorry, we didn't, but this will, uh, because if it breaks one place, it'll go through Washington or Beckett or Otis. Okay? Um. Um. You should know that one hundred percent of people in this town have access to the internet. Um. So that's how it stands and, uh. We, I, I, we had a meeting this morning, um, with, uh, the, the southern cluster. And I asked, and there, there are really no major expenses left. That other than, you know, recurring stuff. So, um, if we were to use this money, this twenty thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars, which we were awarded. I mean, um, we don't, we can't tell you right now, but. Um, I'm going to ask Kim to, uh, kind of give you update on some of the project, some of the, uh, outline properties that we have. So.
Okay. Well, when we were discussing what we could use twenty thousand dollars for, we had. Four things, one of them came up this morning. The grant's going to be short. About eight grand a town for the redundancy loops. That was one. The other issue that we have is. With, uh, drops in subscribers and we keep running into a situation. These odd situations where somebody signed up during the construction period, which is when we were covering all costs to the house. But for some reason, overnight, usually not their own fault, it didn't happen and they just fell through the cracks and now they're like, hey, I want my internet. Uh, so those people we feel we have to cover because wasn't their fault. They weren't, uh, signed up. We also have a, like, a second group, which is very small, but like the Blanford Fair asked, um. For a cup, for a connection, they had a cold drop. Um, they want to make it live and said, gee, it'd be nice if we could handle that. Um, it's another use of money. And the third thing is we have people who took cold drops, uh, back during construction. Would now like to subscribe. But the costs, uh, even though they have a drop to their house, costs installing that equipment has really risen very quickly. So we're now approaching nearly a thousand dollars per house just for Whip City to come out and hook somebody up. Whereas before the whole thing was five, six, seven hundred bucks for the most part, so. So are these specific instances? No, is it something we'd like to help those people with? To at least defray some of the costs, something we talked about. So those are the four things we were talking about. If we had twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, the reason the costs have gone up because the crews are not in town, so they have to mobilize the crews. To bring them up here.
And they were aware of that though, correct, prior to if they.
Oh, they know.
Drop, so.
The customers?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So they were aware that if they chose a cold drop instead of live, that they may pay more going forward, correct?
They don't have any excuses, if that's your question.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, I totally understand wanting to, you know, um, but I also feel like it's kind of fair that they knew, you know.
Um, what, what are you thinking on giving or helping them with a percentage or?
No, it's just, and it may be just a token amount after everything is said and done, you know, um, but it has. We were kind of surprised that the costs of getting the techs out there to install, to actually connect somebody. Has now approached a thousand bucks.
Yeah.
We thought it was a couple of bucks.
How, how many do you think you're missing or are, are interested in getting these cold drops? Ten, fifteen?
We assume that anybody with a cold drop, which.
You should know how many, you don't know.
I do know, but I can't tell you right now. I can tell you this, eighty-eight percent of this town is signed up.
Yeah.
Uh, that includes cold drops. I mean.
But I think, but I think there's a twenty, almost a twenty percent gap between subscribers and cold drops. So those are the people and we like to have a subscriber.
What, three years?
Yeah.
Um, how many people do you think slipped through the cracks where you were saying?
Very few.
Very few.
Handful. Five, ten.
But we've no more.
No, I, I doubt it's ten.
I mean, I can give you those.
No, no, he said that fell through the cracks that got missed.
Not the cold drop. Zero, nothing?
Yeah, no.
No, no, no.
Like the guy on Westerly Road.
Yeah. Oh, that one, okay.
Yeah, the oddballs who, no fault of their own, signed up during the appropriate time. Fell through the cracks. They couldn't put the service in for some reason, not our fault, not their fault. But it happened.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just.
Yeah.
There isn't.
Yeah, right.
No, it's a handful, but we don't know because we've got, we'd have to go back into Whip City's application forms. Come through with a flight to.
I just sent ballpark.
Yeah.
It's just.
So. Just so you're clear on what, so when we had heard the, uh, few weeks ago that the money, um, wasn't necessarily needed because of the grant fund that came in. Um, our immediate thought was we've been working on a project, um, originally it was to purchase a new generator for this building, but we, we, uh, did some. Research, had some people come in and we've learned that it's not a new generator we need, but a new rewiring.
Flipping relay and stuff, so if it comes out and through the whole building, it only does the sprinkler system now. So we could use it for emergency, if, you know, the town lost power and they wanted to come here in the winter, we couldn't do it now.
So yeah, our goal is to eventually, um, we're trying to get this building to be closer to an emergency shelter, um, if needed. So that's where we were excited to be able to use some of that funding for. Um, it was kind of a big project and we didn't have, you know, the money needed for that boring job. Um. The eight thousand dollars that you're talking, eight thousand per town for, to finish the project?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what it looks like the overrun is for when we applied for the grant to what actual costs.
And when would something like that be due, do you think? Is that like something in this fiscal year?
Uh, no, within a year.
Yeah, they're almost done with projects.
Yeah, they're almost done, as I said, um.
So it would be within this fiscal year that some.
Yes, it would.
Have to find budgeting.
Yeah, and this, and this project is not running fiber anywhere. It is just basically replacing equipment in the huts. Upgrading it and running and rewiring.
I think the. They have to have it done by the end of September. For the grant. For the grant.
So what I'm saying is there's going to be a bill coming to us that is not budgeted for, for about eight thousand dollars.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Qualified, yes, yeah.
Okay. Um, what are your thoughts on finance?
So two things, so for the eight thousand potentially, so with this. Backup power project, we allocated, I think, twenty-three thousand in ARPA funds to the design of this transfer switch. Um, if we want to do an updated hazard mitigation plan, which will allow us to go out and get grants. That's probably about another twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
Um, and then, then in terms of remaining ARPA funds, um, you know, we have something like. Fifteen or so thousand. Um, so if it's possible, there would be money there to do that eight thousand. Um, the other option that I floated to Peter was, there's a municipal fiber. Build outs grant that's going to be coming up in the spring.
Okay.
Obviously, you know, we've kind of built out our system already, but it's, it's not clear to me yet, but it's possible that some of these things you're talking about. Might be eligible. Um, it does require a local MASH, so it's possible we could use ARPA funds to the local MASH. Um, and so we, instead of spending twenty thousand dollars, we could spend, you know, five, ten of ARPA money and leverage that to the grants, so.
Okay.
So a couple of different options, um.
So you're saying we have fifteen thousand left in ARPA in addition to this extra twenty?
Yeah, well, so there's, no, no, so there's the. I'm not even mentioning the twenty.
Okay.
But, um, so. Well, yes, including that twenty thousand that was originally allocated to that, that project. There's about fifteen left after, if we assume we're going to use some portion of it for this local hazard mitigation plan also.
Okay.
So.
So, oh, go ahead.
Uh, so. We actually got like thirty-five thousand. If you got this, well, the sixteen and the twenty, you know, simple math.
So what we could look at is if we're going to be looking into that grant for the eight thousand. If we could get some, some, maybe some numbers on those few folks that their application was missed, um. That could be something that we might be interested in helping to fund through ARPA, in my opinion, that we might be helping to.
Those people are. So erratic to that.
That would be sensible to.
Yeah, when we hear, yeah, you hear this, oh, yeah, I remember that, you know, four years ago, you know, that's signed up and.
Are these like second homeowners or?
Uh, well.
In some cases, yeah, best, like, well, that's really the second, yeah.
Second home, yeah.
But if he wants to subscribe, we don't care, so.
Yeah. So like we, eh, we could help in that situation with some ARPA funds. It sounds like we would have, um, the money.
But that's, you know, that's a thousand bucks.
Yeah.
So, I mean, yeah, so.
Minuscule, really.
So the other thing I would just say is the way we've done in the past, as you well know, because you were awarded funds, is we had. Town departments come to us with specific projects and, you know, apply. It's not, not an owner's application process, which is something that lays out. Okay, here's how much money we think we need, then here's the project, um, something that we can use for reporting purposes. Um, I think that application is still on the website. I have to check what's trending. Um, but if there's, we can, we can talk and then see if there's something you want to do for that.
So we could apply for like a nine hundred dollar grant or something like that.
Yeah, well.
Talk about that.
But you said, okay, but, but we were talking about the eight thousand that we probably are going to need.
Well, we're talking about, we're talking about this, the subscriber right now.
Yeah, okay.
It could, it could be a combination, right? You could say, okay, this, we're looking at eight thousand for this equipment in the huts that wasn't covered. Um, and then also we've identified this number of users who aren't, you know, actually fully, uh, hooked into the system yet, um, you know, something like that.
We could identify the cold drops, how many there are.
Yes, can do that.
Yeah.
These oddballs, no.
The cold drops, you know. Um. I don't think any, I think everybody in this room is hooked up, but for instance, uh, Sumner, okay, Sumner has a cold drop to his house. Now, when that house is sold. The person who buys that house will have to pay the install. Uh, on the other hand. House like I believe, uh, uh, Jacqueline just bought, was already hooked up with the internet, so all she had to do was, you know, so that's the difference.
Yeah. Okay.
And, and then there's the fairgrounds.
What?
The fairgrounds.
Well, the fairgrounds, yeah, it's kind of a one-off, you know.
Yeah.
Okay, and so if the fairgrounds, um.
And they didn't ask.
They didn't ask for help. If they do need assistance, then they can certainly fill out the ARPA for a thousand dollars or whatever it costs to hook up.
We're going to cover it.
Okay.
We, we voted to cover the.
Okay, that's good. I think any help with the fairgrounds right now is, is good.
Um.
Okay.
So Christopher, uh, on that thing you sent, uh, didn't get a chance to look at it, but. You know, I look at that and say, well, what more do we need on those, you know, on the infrastructure?
Right, you might, you might say, well, there's nothing left to build out. We've already done that.
Unless somebody puts a development in Blanford, we're done.
Well, again, I, they haven't released the actual guidelines for the grant yet.
Yeah.
Because the application process is in the spring, and so I was wondering if maybe something like that eight thousand in terms of the equipment we're talking about might fall into the category.
Uh huh.
But I, I don't know yet. Uh, might be worth a call, like, I can see. Let me reach out somewhat soon to figure out what that might be.
Question, Eric? Does, uh, a grant coming next year help you at all?
Is it going to be due before then? You said September.
It's, yeah, it's.
It's going to be due until, until November.
Yeah, I, no.
I guess.
Right. No. Yes, no, I. I don't know.
We don't, we don't know exactly.
We don't know. I'm sorry, but.
But it is redundancy, which is what we, yeah, asked for the money for to begin with.
Yes, redundancy.
So it's, it's, it's like. Okay, you can rescind. The twenty thousand five fifty minus the eight thousand, because we know we're definitely going to have that.
Mm-hmm. Well, if we had better, I'm sorry, we don't have the figures. We just asked on the phone call this morning. And he said, so the person who's really kind of spearheading this is, uh, uh. Kent Lou, who's the, uh, I believe the chairman of the Board of Selectmen in Washington and the head of the MLP in Washington.
So here's what I'm thinking, um, since we have that fifteen in there. If we rescind the twenty, right, and then you get a bill, we get a bill, we have the eight thousand. You already have the application pretty much filled out. You just change what you need to change.
Okay.
Put it through again, and then we can, um, talk about funding it through, with that funding.
Yeah, and I would say, so I pulled up the grant program here, it says, uh, so overall it says closing critical gaps that exist in municipal networks. Um. Centralized management of IT infrastructure, uh, cybersecurity records management, backup and recovery. Um, so I, this all sounds at least vaguely like something like what we're talking about might. Fit into that. Um, so again, that might be a way for us to take a smaller award of ARPA money and leverage it, he's going to cap.
All the grants we've had from the government have been pretty much. To go buy the house. And then after that, no, so. So that would be the question I had.
Yeah, and we're already buy all the houses.
Right.
Right.
So, what about, so the other thing is, and we should talk about this, is the, uh, aggregate program.
Oh, municipal aggregation.
Yeah, yeah, make municipal aggregation. I don't know how that would fall in and. I, I suppose I should be working on that, but I haven't.
No, I mean, something, I think Mary was the other person who was kind of.
Yeah.
Interested in this, so, uh, a reminder, this is the kind of bulk purchasing of electricity.
Yes.
To break costs down. Um, I just saw something interesting where the Department of Public Utilities is trying to create like a template that towns can just. Pick up and adopt as their municipal aggregation plan. Um, so I think that's something.
Already there.
Well, they said, there was something about that, like updating it or making it so it's even easier to use or something, but yeah, they had, you're right, they had a lot online. So I think maybe next back is we'll talk and take a look at it and see what the one we need to do.
Okay.
I've been thinking seriously about doing the hut, just doing the hut. It's a separate bill. Just go to Constellation or whatever.
Competitive suppliers.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, I would introduce you to motion to, uh, rescind the vote to award ARPA funds for the broadband. Excuse me, broadband infrastructure invoice in the amount of twenty thousand five hundred and sixty-six cents taken on January third, twenty twenty-two.
Seven.
Any discussion? All favor?
All right.
Hi. Great, thank you guys for coming. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Any questions on?
Yeah, no, could just get back to us if, when the eight thousand dollars.
When it comes in.
I, uh, no. Know was the hut was undermining, so I.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Uh?
I thank you. We had, we had a, we had a. So I, there's a, there's a security, they alarmed the system.
Yeah.
Armed the system in there.
Yeah.
Was never armed, I went in this morning, or Verizon went in, and the police department get a call. Emergency, I'm, uh.
Break in.
Burglary break-in, so I called them up, I said, forget it. But, uh, I took care of that, cuz now I found the codes.
Okay.
What, thank you for, uh.
Sure. I wanna give the MLP during that snows now.
No.
Because.
We don't know the amount.
We don't put a bill in front of it.
Or do we know what it would be?
No, nor do we know when exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so. Let's do, um, well, I have, um. So motion to go to update from Superintendent Kristen City, uh, five C. Is there a second? Discussion, all fair. I. Come on down. How are you?
Yeah, we hope.
Not bad, you too.
Thanks for having me.
Have you had teachers back in the building yet?
All over the place.
Oh, boy.
How've you been?
Not bad. Back today, ED.
Nice.
Springfield doesn't mess around.
Well, I just wanted to give the board a quick update as to what's been going on at Gateway Regional, we've had an exciting summer. Um, we had our. Um, second year of our summer program, and it was five weeks of free summer programming for students K through ten. And then grades eleven and twelve were invited to come and be staff members that that were paid.
Hmm.
Um, and we had over two hundred students participate, which for our district of. Um, you know, just under eight hundred is a pretty great ratio.
Awesome.
It's awesome.
Hmm.
Um. And it was really engaging, they went on two field trips a week. Um, they were given transportation, meals, as well as STEM pro- STEM programming throughout the summer, and so it was really. Exciting, um, one shift that we made this year was last year, we had. Three separate programs running, um, so we had our required special education program for students who on their IEP said that they need summer programming without. Um, in order to not regress, then we had the high school program and the elementary school program, and this time we tried to really integrate. Um, the special ed program to the general ed program, so it was more of like an inclusive model, and that was, I, I think, well received. Because it wasn't like, you know, students with disabilities go over here, and then, you know, students here for STEM programming over here, so it was nice to. Um, be more inclusive in that, so, and it was full day, um. So I'm really proud of that, cuz our staff really rallies when. Um, they could be just on vacation, and it was nice to, um, have that continuation, so that was five weeks of summer.
So the kids that were required summer school felt less like summer.
Exactly, exactly. And it like, they went on whale watches, they went to the zoo, it was really, really great, um, they made a pollinator garden in the back, um. It was exceptional, so hats off to the staff that. Planned it and, um. It was really great for our students, so that was awesome. Um, you may have seen in the news that through the state budget, fifteen million dollars was approved for rural school aid. And I was told by many legislators that that was in part due to the advocacy from Gateway specifically, which I think was really cool. Um, they had over forty letters and calls from just our community, and so I think that is pretty powerful. Considering last year it was five point five million. It was slated to be seven point five million and the governor's initial budget, then it went up to ten million. Um, in the Senate, and then it ended up being fifteen million, and there were multiple trips taken to the State House by. Um, myself, students, teachers, school committee members, um, select board members, and it was a really. Uh, concentrated group effort to get that number up, so I think that is. Um, great, however, um, there are a lot of other communities eyeing that pot of money now. Because it's money that's allocated to rural schools, and so I know that there are other select boards hoping to tap into that. Whereas Gateway has always qualified, cuz we are truly rural.
Hmm.
Um, but there are some communities that are like on the edge that are hoping to. Um, be awarded some of that funding, um, so I. Am anxiously awaiting what those assignments look like, because fifteen million dollars. First of all, is only a portion of what the rural school report says that. Um, the state needs to allocate to rural schools in their budget in order for. Um, equitable access, and second of all, if they spread that money amongst more towns, then it's not gonna make a difference for us.
Yeah.
So, um, if you get a slate, a state legislator's ear, that is a good narrative to share in that. Um, the rural aid should really be funded fully at sixty million, and it should be allocated to the districts that were identified in the rural schools report. As truly needing it for equitable access.
Hmm.
Um, so there's like lots of narratives out there that it's like a huge win, a tremendous victory. Um, and it's a step in the right direction, but it is certainly not. A tremendous victory.
Is this, uh, allocation part of the? One point two billion dollars that the federal government get the state for, gave to the state for education?
I am unsure of that, I don't think so, so the state has recalculated how they issue. Chapter seventy money to schools, and I think that is part of it, so the Student Opportunity Act gave. About, um. I think six billion over six years to schools, and that really only went to like Gateway communities, not to be confused with Gateway Regional School District.
Hmm.
So, for example, um, the town of Agawam got like eleven percent more in state aid. Um, the town of Taunton, I think, got thirteen percent more in state aid. Gateway Regional got zero point four percent more.
No, it's just that like, when, well, when I, when I was at the meeting, uh. Last summer, uh. They were talking about the one point two billion. And then I'm looking at. You know. Like fifteen million here. You know, and then. When I was looking into it and Marvel had got. A million five, and I'm thinking Marvel, that was one of the richest communities in Massachusetts. That can well afford their schools.
You're a hundred percent right.
So much. When the regional schools out here.
Yeah.
I think Long Meadow got twelve percent, so, yeah.
They got.
You know, and, and Gateway got the zero point four, so that. It's.
You made me feel so good.
Yeah. Well, and I've been a little, um, sassy with my advocacy, because that's just not right, you know, I mean.
The transportation is where we're so in need to.
Correct.
So do you think any of this funding will go towards, um? The transportation?
So there is a narrative out that. Transportation is funded at a hundred percent, but those numbers are based on last year's calculations, it's a reimbursement.
Hmm.
And they don't have the calculation for what, um, contracts look like this year, so I'm not quite sure how they're.
Okay.
Estimating that, it's, it'll be funded at a higher percent, which I'm appreciative of, but. Um, to say it's a hundred percent is a little.
Hmm.
I don't wanna, don't quote me there, it's a little misleading. It, it is more than what they typically allocate, which is good, but it's. It's not near what we need, and for note, the sixty million that's noted in the rural schools report that is needed to be distributed statewide to the districts. Identified in the rural schools report, that was also two years ago, and inflation since then has gone up pretty significantly, so. Um. I am hopeful that there is attention being paid to rurals, towns and schools, so we can, um. Have a voice at the table, but. There's still a lot of work to be done there, um, I just came from a meeting with Ann Goby, who was the, named the Director of Rural Affairs for the state. And I asked her, like, what is her? Role, because it's new, so is it advisory to the governor, is it a decision maker? Um, and she wasn't quite sure, and so I appreciate. Again, the attention that's being paid to rural communities, but there has to be like financial support that goes along with. Um, that attention, so. I would say we should keep doing what we're doing and advocating, cuz it was heard. Um, but it's not close to what we need. Um, and if you see the headlines about like the tremendous victory, um, that is not my interpretation. So, I just wanna be clear.
Is it, is it Jesse who has that money, that pot of money?
No, so the state has a way to calculate what districts should get it, and it's based on income and sparsity. But. Right, and so, but some districts or some towns kind of go in and out of qualification, and so it's really hard, so. For example, the fifteen million is allocated statewide, I still don't know how much Gateway is getting, and so in terms of like planning for our budget, I mean, our budget was done back in. March, um, for towns to approve for their warrant in May. So it's a little late and, um, unclear as to how we can still use that money, so for example, we did. Plan on, say, if we get a million dollars, we would, um, spend it on all of these things, but we, we still don't know if we're even going to. What we're gonna get out of that fifteen million, and it's unlikely it's going to be a million. Um, so we did lay off, um, we did an analysis of our programming, and for example, we had. Three art teachers at the high school, you know, with a hundred sixty students at the high school, that, that ratio didn't really make sense, and so we did. Lay off an art teacher without having to compromise programming in terms of like classes are still being offered, but. The amount of flexibility for that department isn't going to be available as much, but we just can't afford it, I mean, towns can't afford it, the, the district can't afford it. So we're still in this position of making cuts. Um, and not knowing what we're gonna get in rural aid, and it'd be irresponsible to plan on that for essential programming.
Sure.
Um. So it's still a bit of a conundrum.
Yeah.
So, not a tremendous victory. Um, but still progress. Um, I also wanted to share that we had thirty students at the high school, which is a lot of students placed in internships this year, and so that was through a grant. Um, students were paid, I think it was sixteen or eighteen dollars from this grant, and so we had our program coordinator work with. Businesses and towns and, um, departments to figure out how to place students all around the district, and so that was really successful, and I'm hoping that we get that grant again. But again, it's not, it's a competitive grant, and it's things that we apply for that are outside of. Our typical programming, so we're able to do these amazing things because we get grants, um.
Was that the water?
Um, the water operator was funded through that, um, there were students placed in like beekeeping, there was a student placed at, in the announcement. The booth for the star fires, so like a lot of cool opportunities for our kids.
Great.
Um, and then just our goals for this upcoming year is to, um, there's two goals, so one of them is around curriculum and instruction, and to really implement. The high quality instructional materials that we were able to obtain these past two years, um, through grants, and so. You know, teachers would spend an exorbitant amount of time creating materials for students to learn, and now that we have access to these high quality instructional materials, the time is going to be. Reallocated around supporting teachers to implement those materials, so it's. A nice reallocation of time, so they don't need to just create things based on what the standards are, they have a reference for what to go off of, so that's providing that support. Um, and then really having everyone feel like they have a place at Gateway Regional, including students and staff, and so like really focusing on. Building that sense of belonging and, um. A, a place where everyone feels really respected in a deep way, so those are our two kind of bigger picture goals for this year.
Um, has the connections group started pushing in to teach?
Yes, they have.
Oh, it's great.
Yep, so the middle school cohort and the high school cohort were trained in the spring, and they taught in health classes, um, in grades. Six, seven and eight, um. I think in April and May.
That's great.
It was awesome, thank you for that.
Yeah.
And then, you know, we will have to relook at our regional agreement at some point, and so that was kind of on hold for last year.
Yes.
Um, but we're gonna have to re. Think about how we get together to ensure that we can have a regional agreement that reflects the current, um, laws, and so. That's something that you'll probably be hearing about from me soon.
I forgot that that wasn't signed yet, that was. Still two towns.
One, one town. Um, and then there's also an exciting opportunity coming up that we, that's, that's another grant. That I haven't shared too widely with my community yet, but it's, um, public. In a bigger way, and so I don't feel too. Special sharing this, but we got this huge grant from the Bar Foundation, which is a private organization. That funds opportunities for schools and students just to be. Really transformative in how students' needs are met, and so the charge to us is to create a plan this year. Where every student's needs are met at the high school. And so because we're so small, we're able to really include every student in the district and how we're gathering information and figuring out what our students need, like, is it more internships? Is it different classes, is it? Um, more access to colleges, like, wha- what does that look like, and so after we create a plan with the support of the Bar Foundation, they will review that plan. And if they, um, feel like it matches their. Philosophy, then they will fund it. Which is kind of amazing.
Yeah.
It's not a state grant or federal grant that has all of these additional hoops that we need to jump through, it's a private grant and. They, I felt like I was on Oprah when they were like, if we like your plan, you get the money. So there were many districts that applied, from my understanding, and they selected eight. Um, I've gotten calls from six other superintendents asking me how we got it, and so it's pretty competitive, and I think it's going to be. An amazing opportunity for our district to like really meet student states wicked excitement.
Yeah.
Thank you. You have any questions for me or? Things you wanna know about?
I don't think so, I'm hearing all the subtle in the, in the public.
Good.
Things are running well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great district, and we're, um, there's some real momentum and like positive energy around the work that's going on.
Yeah, I saw all the kids out there and parents, um, going to, um, representatives for rural aid, I thought it was really cool, that was a great. Uh, program.
Yeah, I feel like we're unified and like the push, because it's not just about pinning towns against one another, the schools against towns, it's bigger than us, you know, so. We're gonna work together.
Good.
Alright, well, thank you for having me.
Coming. Enjoy the, the little of summer you have left.
Yes, that is the plan.
That was over a week ago.
True. Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, so next up, we're moving all around today, motion to go to, uh, action item. D, review and act on appointment of Police Chief Jennifer DeGial as interim animal control officer. Come on down. Did that dog ever find a home?
Finally.
Oh, good.
But. The state has over five hundred applications for. Uh, vouchers for spaying and neutering. And he needs to be neutered.
Yeah.
Like desperately.
Yeah.
So. How does the town, how was the town dealt with?
Getting voucher?
Great, well, the voucher, our names in.
Okay.
The pot, but. We're potentially like six plus months out.
Wow.
From even getting the voucher.
Uh, did you reach out to Blanford Animal Hospital and see if they would?
So they'll make, they, they. We'd have to pay upfront. And then get reimbursed from.
With the other way?
They don't wanna do the, they don't wanna do the, um, vouchers anymore at all, but. It's an agreement they made, so they have to.
That's the Blanford Fair.
Oh, good. Okay.
Um, hmm, I don't know, I don't.
So I know that there's a budget for. For expenses.
They may end up having to come from that until he can get. We can get the voucher to get reimbursed. Unfortunately.
And we, were we holding him at the kennel?
Yeah, we were holding him at the kennel. That seems to go, that was really good.
That's, it's probably the first time it's been used.
It it really was. It's, it's been sitting there so long unused that the door settled. So I have to like fix the. Part of it, but um, yeah, the latch.
Um, was there a car stolen in town last night?
Apparently there was. I was on vacation um until this morning, so.
Somebody said they saw it in Springfield, so. Keep your doors locked, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm gonna put something out. I I just found out about it. Mary had asked earlier, but I just found.
So I didn't mean to interrupt that, but I had to know.
Yeah, no, no, I. I couldn't believe there was a car stolen.
Well, we had it back years ago, we had where they took a lot of them.
It's, it's, yeah, it's starting to ramp up, so.
So you're interested in being interim animal control officer? Okay.
I think with the, the way that. The way that things are set up right now. With us having the vehicles to be able to transport the animals. Um, the ability to get into and. Have more access to the kennel up here because my officers, like. Last week when Raptor was up there. They would go up there and check on him. They'd bring him water, take him for walks. So that worked out perfect. Yeah, I think that it's, we're kind of set up in a good place. To be able to, to sort of do that. And I don't know how Blanford has done it in the past, but. In, in the towns that I've worked for. Uh, animal control falls under the police department anyway.
So when, in the absence of an appointed uh animal control officer. The police chief is the default.
So my only question would be. Because we're shared with Chester. Does that in any way, so if we appoint you as the interim animal control officer? And that would be sort of a separate appointment on top of, right? It's not, it wouldn't affect. Chester in any way, right? I just want to make sure we don't step on.
We have a separate line item. Expenses and stipends for animal control, so it's not connected with Chester's.
So is that in the bylaws, Mary, that if we don't have one, the chief become part of police department?
Yeah, I think we probably should.
I mean, if somebody else wanted to step up on mall for it. Seriously, but I mean, it was, it, it just, this was a good experience for me. Getting the call, trying to figure out where to bring him, ended up sending him down to um. Williamsburg.
Your Goshen, right?
Yeah, it was the Goshen, uh, not Williamsburg. What is, what's the other one? Chesterfield? I think Chesterfield, yeah, she lives in Chesterfield, but she's the Goshen ACO. Sent her down there, I sent him down there because that was the closest place that we could get him to. And then it felt bad, so I. Realized after talking with Chris, we had the kennel here. I went and got him and it worked out.
Is the lights come on? Were there any? There's a light on the cemetery building that shines on the. Cage there.
Yeah, the light came on.
I didn't know, I, I didn't know if they accidentally shut off the switch or not. I put a Band-Aid over the switch so they'd leave it on.
Yeah, no, no, the light came on.
Yeah, no, thank you very much. I know we've had a couple of questions in the last week, people looking for ACO. So that would be really helpful. Um, you'll just have to maybe. On the website, we'll. Okay. Um, you asked for an appointment to uh. Yeah, right, uh, Chief Jennifer DuGiel as interim animal control officer. Any discussion? On favor? Congratulations.
Oh, by the way. Did they take that car off of, out of uh? Cabo Mountain Road, the one that was on the corner.
So here's the thing, that property. It actually belongs to the. It, it, it's on the property of the owner.
It is.
It is. Yeah, the Cabo Mountain or um Springfield Water only owns where that, the fences or that gate. To right there. So originally it was parked. A foot into it. So he backed it up, but it's on their property. It is being moved though.
Cause I, I don't know, it just looked like. I thought that too, when I went, I'm going, what the heck?
Yeah, no.
That goes with the guy across the street with all the other car.
It goes, yeah, right.
It's way over limit.
Right, right. Yeah, that's a whole nother.
Alright, uh, now I would mostly go to the. Do I have to go there or do I not? Want me to go to one day liquor license? I have kind of a uh. The application for one day with her license. Four days, sorry.
Four days. And chief. I, I didn't know if you wanted to stick around with this liquor license discussion.
Alright, so. They're filling it up for the um. For the fair. There's, it says there's gonna be a cash bar. Uh, open to the public.
It says beer and wine, right?
It's just be, is it beer and wine? Um. I know last week we talked to um. Mister Rip, Matt Ripley, and he was telling us there's gonna be a sectioned off area.
So the only thing I noticed was, I think. Where they recorded the days and whatnot. He said something about being open until eleven.
Supposed to be, yeah, it says eleven every night. I thought it was supposed to be the nine o'clock original when we talked with them.
Um, I, I called Matt last week. I haven't heard anything back. And I just got this from them today.
The fair's not open until eleven.
I, yeah, so I was kind of like.
Friday night will be.
I, yes, I got this after you called. Yeah, so that was the only thing I noticed that, you know, there might be some discussion about because I think broadly speaking, the board's been supportive of having.
Yeah. But it wouldn't be, yeah, you're correct. It wouldn't be um. Every night, it would just be eleven PM Friday night.
That would be my.
Ten AM is early, woo, alright.
That is the other question. So how early does the fair open on the Friday?
Three o'clock it opens. Three o'clock or, or it is four?
Right, it's, it says the beer garden. Have your favorite beer and enjoy your band Friday four to nine, Saturday twelve to nine, Sunday twelve to nine. And Monday twelve to four. So that eleven o'clock is gonna be in there.
So we'll prove it with the hours mapping.
Fair thing, that's what I thought he said, I just. So I'm gonna change it on here just for my reference.
So entertained motion to approve the application for a four day liquor license by Stylin Beer Company. For the dates of the first, September first through fourth twenty twenty three at the fairgrounds um. Matching with the adjustment of the hours matching the fairground hours. There a second?
Yeah.
Sorry, uh, and you sent them on favor? Alright. Yes, ma'am.
Matt told me that they're also gonna say ciders, followers like beer, not apple cider, but.
Yeah, it's pretty much like that. I don't agree. I don't think it's.
Beer, wine, and cider. Not an aficionado.
A little more of that. Alright, let's. Going over town administrator report.
Right, so I'll make this relatively quick um. So uh, last week, uh, we got a email from Community Compact, so uh, there are best practice grants available again. On a rolling basis for the next year. Um, so they get everyone a list of. Best practices we can pursue. They, there are a whole bunch of different options. Um, one I've been talking to our IT team about is, has to do with cybersecurity. Um, notice identified all these. IT updates they need to do to bring us in line, but. The latest basically standards for cybersecurity. Um, and the figure had me thinking this is the grant. So I'm gonna work with, I'm working with Steve Barlow and notice to figure out if that's something we can do. Um, the other thing they announced, of course, with that municipal fiber uh that we talked about. Um, there is also a. Community uh IT grant that we're hoping to use for that municipal finance software update that we've been talking about. Um, and then the last thing is um a regionalization grant, which will be come. Open in uh January and that's what we're talking about with the uh, the fire chief potentially, so. Sharing a fire chief position or something along those lines. Um, so just a heads up, I'll be coming to you guys with some suggestions and things to sign. Terms of ongoing projects, uh, so uh Peter Wozniak, who did the kind of initial uh. Electrical engineering work for the backup power came by again. So we uh, he came by and he took a look at the whole power system there. He did point out that I think because of the rain, the system around the switchboard has gotten even worse. It appears a lot, and I guess. Hoppy would maybe wear this, I didn't quite realize.
Yeah, he did say that in one of the meetings.
So it's, it's, it looked really bad down there last week. Um, so I, I reached out to Almaz and asked them to see if they could do something about it. Um, they think we're about five thousand dollars.
It's been a problem, plus cat water hawk.
Yeah, so, so they're gonna be. They're talking to EverSource and they're gonna be freaking out at time. Uh, so yeah, so anyway, yeah, you might see. Uh, and then really quick, uh, so quarter patio project, we put it out in bid. Um, we have a few nibbles here and there, so we'll see what comes back. Um, you know, the plan there is depending on how they come back. Um, and what the contractor is able to do given the short production period left in the season.
No, is that gonna be cement, Mary, or the blocks? Stone?
Not, not gravel, stone.
No, no, I didn't, I didn't, you mean, field stone.
I saw um, Nicole showed me the, the sketch. It was really cool. Yeah, I'm really excited about it. There's gonna be like a little built-in bench area.
Now that part is fixed where the foundation was leaking?
Yes, that's all, all the um concrete work.
So depending on what happens, we might need a, a grand extension. They can't, it turns out they can't do it within the next month, you know.
We got October.
Yeah, right.
Um, I did talk to Nicole a little bit about the sofa sign, super sign. Um, there was some talk about moving it up the sidewalk a little bit. Um. My only concern would be, we had initially wanted it to be visible for cars driving by. I, I'm aware though that the writing is smaller than we thought. So.
So I can keep, I can keep working with the vendor because initially they said, oh, we can, we can do a big course and have something that's, you know.
Yeah, that would be ideal, I think.
It's been, it has been tough with them though, like so our contact first, did we initially have their lap? Um, so it's, it has been kind of dragging on.
What bothers me with it if it was too close to the road? You ever seen Paul Snow by there? Point of ways up there and we surely don't want to break it.
It would have to be out of, that's not right away anyway, so I think it would be far enough back.
No, but that's right away, that's not that far up there. But I'm talking, they put the snow in my yard, my right away is in the middle of the sidewalk. That's where it stops. And they put it in my yard, so I'm, you're familiar, Mary. That's all. Well, I just want to make sure it's set back enough and then.
But then, but then it needs to be closer than so it can be red.
Red?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a.
Letter and being small for you old people.
Well, I'll put my glasses on when I drive by.
Super has offered to meet with us collectively on a Zoom meeting. And as soon as we can get everybody's and times organized.
Just a crazy question. So this is a two-sided sign, I think. Could they put it at an angle? And then you could see it quite easily.
Well, so the, the one side though is actually just a, a static map.
I didn't know. I thought that side was. Just a thought.
No, it's good luck, but yeah, it's one side. Um, so yeah, those are the main things for me for now.
Okay.
Hey, how's the sleep going?
At that time, yeah, which was getting hard.
And, and this community grant, is there money for cemetery?
You know, that's an interest. Uh, I have never seen a best practice for cemetery. I um.
Don't keep telling me I'm going through a lot of money, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, you know. Let me poke around and look.
Yeah, poke around.
I did also see the other day um. Somebody in our small town administrative group asking about consultants for cemeteries and somebody. Found this great resource associated with Mount Auburn that.
Well, Westfield got, got some kind of grant for their uh cemetery, their park cemetery there and. Or Pine, Pine Hill or whatever they call it. And I'm thinking, geez, that's a private cemetery.
Pine Hill?
Yes, absolutely. Well, how come they got a state grant? I'm surprised. That's why I'm asking that, cause I know it's private. Yeah, looking at, thank you.
Alright, uh, next up, we have action item B. Uh, we have uh, we're going to ask my contract base state regional contractors for water treatment.
Table, uh, so right here is, right here is still working with the. Low bidder that finalized things.
Okay.
I, I'm hoping I'm not gonna have to call you guys in next week.
Okay.
If you have to, you have it on one day.
No, this is my time.
This is mine.
Uh, alright, E, review and act on um adoption of American disabilities notice and grievance procedure. Do I have that somewhere?
Yeah, so the next few items have to do with our uh. ADA self-valuation transition plan that we completed last year. Um, so now the next step is now we have that plan, start gradually implementing it. Um, so the first step is gonna be, we adopt a few of these different um. Items that uh they want to see, so. A grievance procedure, so if somebody, you know, comes to town hall and feels they don't have the access they need, they have a, a. A process to go, that they can go through.
Okay.
And this is all in the service of being able to apply for grant funding actually just next month. Uh, to actually start purchasing uh some additional signage, um, you know, grab bars for bathrooms, uh. Additional door handles, things.
Or the cat toilets.
Yeah, well, yeah, at least the grab bars, so there's some way to use them, yeah.
Cause if you're in their ABA, those gotta be handicap toilets, twelve and a half inches high or something.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know.
I know that's. Don't overlook.
Take a look at our plan, but we're gonna start small and, and. Just see how this first round went.
Go ahead.
And so. Not only are we looking at adoption of that stuff, but um. Appointment of myself as ADA coordinator, so. We're required to have somebody who does that, um, and then also appointment of a few people to our condition on disability.
Grievance, you could call it complaint or something rather than grievance, but just sounds so.
I would just keep it a grievance procedure just because it is, that is one of the checklist items.
They actually use that word.
Yes.
Mary, Mary, forget your union.
So motion to adopt ADA notion and grievance procedure, is there a second? Any discussion? On favor? Alright, um, so it's a um, motion to appoint Christopher Dunn, town administrator uh as to the position of ADA coordinator.
Yes.
A second, uh, discussion?
Yes. Yeah, I want to make sure he gets enough sleep.
Um, favor? Okay, so we've got a few folks um interested in joining the Commission on Disability. We have Margaret McCusky, Mary Cronholm, Judy McKinnon, and Linda Bar, Linda Barnard. Um, so these are not, they don't need like a length of time, they're just.
Every year.
Appointed.
So I, I believe it's staggered um. And I did not. Hear back from folks about how long each of them wants to.
Okay. So there's no, we don't have a cap on how many people we can have. Okay. So why don't we do a. One year, one year, two year, three year? So uh, motion to appoint uh Margaret McCusky and Mary Cronholm to the positions of Commission on Disability for one year.
Second.
Any discussion?
Sorry, um, Margaret and Mary is obviously.
For one, yeah. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint Judy McKinnon to the appointment of Commission on Disability for two years.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor? Sorry, Linda, motion to appoint Linda Barnard to the position of um Commission on Disability for three years.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor? Thank you, Joanne.
Who's, who's the, uh, Mary, who's the nurse on the COA?
Uh, Christine Snalda, or.
Is this because of this disability? I think, I don't know, I just. Thinking that maybe. Have Margaret. Margaret. Feel her out, see if she would be on the board. Is that okay?
The staff works for town?
No.
Okay. Just wondered.
She works for the Board of Health though, doesn't she, Mary? I'm sorry.
No, she isn't. Isn't on the Board of Health.
No, she's hired by them.
Through a grant for shared services.
Okay, so we've got, uh, we're reviewing on One Huntington Road, first refusal option.
Yeah, so the background on this real quick, um, so the beauties um. Property over there is all chapter six and one A, so it was collected ag land. They since opted out of that, uh, and it's unclear actually after talking to the town council. Um, if we do have right of first refusal here. Um, however, the attorneys for sale asked for it. So what I'm gonna say is if we could, I assume, I assume no one wants to settle the sale and. Buy this property for sixty five thousand dollars, um. So if we wanna.
It's motion to.
Motion to not exercise, and I think I provided motion language, but.
I thought this was Spirit Road, no?
No, no, this is Huntington. This is, so there's the, the property at the corner of Huntington and right next to it, there is uh vacant land currently.
Oh, really?
And that's what's being sold.
Okay. Um, yeah, yes, go ahead. No, I think I see the motion right here, I got. Yes, ma'am.
Which of Bother?
Is purchasing it?
Cory's or um. The, that was the trailers.
Uh, the Pauls.
Joe Ball?
Okay, so um, I would um. Motion, motion that the select board vote to not exercise the town's first refusal off. Motion, motion that the select board vote to not exercise the town's first refusal option to purchase approximately five point six acres of land. Presently classified as agricultural land. Um, under section sixty one A located on Huntington Road and that. The chair be authorized to execute a notice of non-exercise option. And any and all other documents is may be necessary in order to provide the owner with such notice.
You, you, you guys got me totally confused here.
This part.
Yeah, this part, this parcel here. All right. This, this is Potee.
Yeah, and this was Potee and they're selling it to them.
And they're selling it to.
It doesn't matter. Yes, but we're just saying right now that we as a town don't wanna buy it.
Oh, okay, so.
That's all we're saying.
All right, okay.
Uh, on favor? We don't need any more property like on our.
No, you're not in property business.
Um, so, uh, motion to approve fiscal year twenty twenty four warrants number two and three. We signed them on the off week. Uh, second? On favor? Um, new business, update Mary Cronholm, uh, sen- Senator Paul Mark's office.
We had, we had a thirty minute Zoom meeting with Senator Mark on July twenty sixth at ten thirty in the morning. Uh, primarily to look for support for increased funding for the municipal vulnerability program. And we're, we, we have the grant already involving other towns, including I think Chister and Middlefield. For brand for roads and beavers. Um, so what I shared was that we are in. There, there. There were. The heading, the people heading this up were the Mystic Watershed. Association and their east. Everybody was from the eastern end of the street. So I shared that we were in West Mass, we're in military between thirteen and fifteen hundred plus feet. Above sea level, whereas Westfield's a hundred and fifty feet above sea level and. The Connecticut River is tidal up as far as Windsor Locks, so. I said we were not so much worried about flooding per se as we were about the. Damage from beaver dams. And. I, I ran into an interesting conversation about that, um. And I was told that beavers leave. They make their dam and they stay around for a while and then they go, but that's not quite accurate. The beavers stay there, they build their lodge, they build their dam. They make, they have their young and the young go off and forage for new places to be. So, we're still faced with.
The removal of the beavers and the untouchable dams.
Yes, so, um. There's some benefit to be redeemed, to be sure, because the water. That they create is accessible to other mammals and it's also a place for other. Things to live, so that's, that's pretty good. Um, so. We're doing roads as part of the municipal vulnerability grant, this year with even beavers for next year. Which just prolongs the enemy and they, they got it, so.
Well, thank you for bringing it up.
I was the only one there. I was the only one. Who said, sure, I'll speak and I was on the agenda. And they forgot to send me the link to the Zoom meeting.
Oh, no.
But we finally, we finally got there, um, so. It's also critical that we, we, that the segue into, into our other roads. It's critical that we maintain accurate records of all of our roads. So that, um, we get appropriate funding through the state for chapter ninety. And we've got approximately sixty five miles of roads, which is accurate, cuz you have to take out. Route twenty three and North Street up to Huntington Road, so. There, there is a bylaw on the books that says all roads must be opened to their full legal width. And in the early days, our roads were laid out at four yards wide. Um, I've researched only once, it's like the road, there's just not enough time. Any year to research all of the roads that we've got and Dave. Finally said to me, we need to research all the roads, um, so. When there's.
Well, we have a report from a couple of years back where they did. Uh, they sort of greeted us on all of our roads and we had like an eighty.
We sent, we sent, I sent a whole bunch of information to both the state and. K P law, but as far as I'm aware, nothing ever came of it. And periodically the state will ask the. Town highway superintendent to review their roads. And chapter ninety was restructured in the early seventies. And the last tree that hiked shepherd was highway superintendent was the first year of the new. Formula for funding. And. I have. Not yet been able to get into the records to see what they list. Or what he listed. Who, who knows, so. Um, but as long as, as the state will periodically chime in and say, hey, what have you got? Then that gives Dave or whoever an opportunity to fill in the blanks, update. Add, subtract, whatever, so anyway. Should time become available? I'll do what I can, Doris will do what she can.
Yeah, that, that report might be an asset to you.
Yeah, you know, and again, we need to, we need, we really need to go back to the beginning and find out what height and.
Yeah.
And that should be readily available. I hope.
Thank you.
Is there, is there any way? That we can get the state to pay for maintenance on Cabo Mountain Lake? Seeing as their road.
Yeah, that's. We sent him a letter, right?
Yeah, I think that's.
And then we get, I mean, I mean, we got this senator, we have a representative supposedly. Are, are they aware of that situation?
Yes, I think everyone's aware of the situation.
Then I think we should have a petition and send a petition to them.
Don't look at me.
No, I, no, I'm, I'm, I think, you know, we should have a petition. For, for them to take their responsibility. Why should our tax burden be taking care of that?
I, I think the, the letter went to everybody, didn't it, Christopher?
Yeah, but was it signed by, by the, the, the townspeople or just by the officials?
I don't remember where we left that, but I know we left it somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, so what ended up happening was we asked, we said, well, we don't own the roads, so we shouldn't be maintaining it. And special counsel said, well, actually, the way all these county roads is worth it. It gone, the ownership has gone to the state, the towns have ended up making up the maintenance.
I think, yeah, we, so we did.
Well, so we should get reimbursement for it because it's the state road.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, we, again, that's.
I, I, I know, it's, it's, it's one of my many.
All right, so we are. We're looking at the expenditure report, we should be around fifteen percent. Um, assessor's contract is a little higher, services. Is that twenty percent?
I think it's at seventy one.
Yeah, but I think that's a one time. Um, town hall maintenance and repairs are up at twenty two, so that's running a little high. The I T is expected because it's a bill we pay.
Yeah, we have that bill from spring broke at the beginning of the year and that's our finance system.
I'm sure I'll ask you that to more times or a few years later. Uh, ambulance, like a bill we pay. Highway overtime is at sixty five percent.
To ask Dave about that one, he gets back from Westport.
Um, and the repairs is at twenty nine. What's this one? Rentals at forty four, geez. Yeah, we should take a look at highway budget.
One of the trucks was down and getting repaired. Now, is that the one that we were supposed to share the expenses with the water department? That flatbed, that old flatbed?
I can ask Dave when I.
My God, water commissioner. Gordon said. That they would share the expenses and it was a four thousand dollar bill came through. So I just wanna make sure water department pays their check, if they're gonna need.
Yeah, cemetery, you're at seventy two percent.
Well, I figured. This customer.
Both of you were spending too much money, P J.
You're right.
I'll go rub it in.
Uh, let's see. Everything else looks pretty good, see if anything's. The, um, water commissioner's site, oh, cuz that's paid quarterly, no mind. All right. Time for bed. Oh, do we have executive session? Uh, okay. So, uh, motion to go into executive session, discuss reputation, uh, sorry, pursuant to M G L thirty eight, section twenty one, eighty one. Discuss reputation, character, physical, condition or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual or discuss disciplinary dismissal of complaints or. Or charges right against public officer employees that member individual. Kara says yes. Roll call vote, what do you say? All right. Yeah, we're gonna shut the recorder.
Is that paragraph that you just read some directly, not on.
Some new amended agenda, uh, if, if you ask.